May I welcome public and members to this extraordinary meeting of Cabinet that we've got being held today? And may I start with any apologies received, Paul? Have we any?
I have not received any apologies, Chair.
No, I have none. Looking for any hands, if anyone has got any to report. And I see none. Okay, fine. May I then move to Members' Disclosure of Procurey and Non-Procurey Interests, please? Are there any? I believe not. I believe not. Again, then, I will move on to the next, which is the minutes of the previous meeting, which are printed on pages five to fourteen. In normal circumstances, when we would be in our public face, I would go through these page by page, but I don't intend to do that. And I'm just really talking it through to see if there are any hands that come to my attention. And I don't have those. So then can I ask Cabinet to raise their hands if they approve the minutes as printed on page five to fourteen? Please raise your hands now for approval. I believe we have full agreement to those, Paul, so we will take those as agreed. Thank you all. You can take your hands down now. Public speaking is the next item. I am not aware that we have any.
No public speakers, Chair.
Thank you. So we move on to the single item that we have before us, which is the Devolution and Local Government Reform Paper. We brought this paper to this extraordinary meeting of the Cabinet today. And all of you will be more than aware that we had council meeting a week ago today. And in fact, we were all engaged in that meeting, a very full debate. I think nearly all our members spoke at that debate. And it was a very well-run event, and I thank you all for that. I then reported the outcome of that debate and the vote to the Secretary of State on Wednesday evening. I was able to speak to him and made it very clear, the views of all of our members, those who were for, those who were against, and what the outcome of the vote was. The Secretary of State was able that night to explain to me the current circumstances and position in local government reform and the imminent White Paper, which we believe will be with us in October. He was able to confirm to me that although we are not in MHCLG with our Case for Change right now, he will be prepared to take our Case for Change to the Prime Minister as and when we receive it. And he gave me a clear indication that we have a chance to be considered in the future as the development of the White Paper comes in this month. As a result of that, the circumstances that we were being faced with before the council debate last week were rumours that the White Paper was being pulled, that it was not going to take place, and that no further consideration would be given to any new and developing models. I don't believe that to be the case. And I've reported that to the Chief Exec, and she has required this meeting to take place now. I think it's important to just go again through the process of this engagement with MHCLG. We've had a debate in Cabinet on the 27th of August. We had last week's debate at council, and it is an executive requirement to submit the Case for Change. So it has to be a decision of Cabinet back again. And you will recall that I deferred the decision of the 27th of August in advance of the council meeting. So we now have to decide to submit through an executive decision of the Cabinet. That is why we're here. I believe that to get a request or an invitation from the Secretary of State is to the advantage of all councils in Warwickshire. And I do remind everyone, this was started by Stratford and Warwick for very sound reasons of their financial position, particularly impacted by Covid. And for all of those reasons, Stratford and Warwick were looking at their reorganisation in advance of the White Paper. Whatever two do will affect all councils, all councils. We know too that our own financial situation of the medium-term financial plan will be severely impacted by Covid over the next few years. We're here at the behest of our residents to make the best decisions on their behalf. We're here to make sound decisions that will mean they can get the services that they need and they expect. And we're here also to ensure that the financial position of this council will enable those services to continue to be given. My understanding of the position that we face ahead of us in the future is that we will have either to raise taxes considerably, we will have decisions to make on reducing services, which may be also considerable, or we have to look at our own way of organisation, which may well deliver all that is needed and not impact on the pockets of our residents who are going to be facing a very uncertain future, many of whom may lose their jobs, many of whom may even lose their homes and their family's uncertainty, that is the outcome of that. For all of those reasons, I believe it is the responsible decision to ask the Secretary of State to issue an invitation for all councils to consider what is the optimum solution for local government within Warwickshire. I personally have a view, which is that it should be one. However, we need to test that. We all of us need to test that. We can never get involved in these conversations if, as others may feel, we do not submit our paper. And the outcome of any invitation from the Secretary of State would be that we then go to our residents, to our businesses, and we engage with them fully in what is important to them, how they see and engage with councils, and what is the way forward that they would want to see. So that is the process that I believe we should follow. So I move the recommendations as laid out, and I open the debate, please. Thank you, Helen. You're the first hand up, Helen Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. I do feel this is yet another attempt at a power grab by county leadership, and I feel it's unacceptable. It clearly ignores a democratic decision made in the last full council, and in doing so ignores the resolution to work with partners and to thoroughly consult with the public who've been left out of this entire process right from the outset. Given this, I request to see all correspondence the county leadership has had with government ministers on this issue of local government reform. Thank you.
Absolutely, of course. You know, I would expect that, and I'm more than happy to do so. I think the words 'power grab' and all of those are absolutely uncalled for. This has been started by others, and it has just been an impact on all of us that we're looking into. There is no power grab. This is about what is the optimum solution for local government that allows services to be continued? Because I believe that that is the future that all of us, whether it's the county or whether it's any of the districts, but all of us face in the future. Helen and I will be more than happy to accommodate you with all documentation that you've requested. Keith, Keith Condecor.
Thank you very much, Chair. I agree with a lot of what Helen said. We do need to actually have all of us seeing all the paperwork and hopefully all of us having discussions or seeing discussions with what's going on and what options are there. We clearly need to move at some level of speed in terms of reforming local government, but also we need to do it carefully. In these big DIY projects, you know, these watch grand designs where people put new windows in, they always say, measure twice and cut once. So we do need to be careful that we don't do something here that actually doesn't fit, and we actually have to do it again or it doesn't happen. So I am alarmed by the sudden increase in speed. I totally understand why we need local government reform. There is so much stupidity in what goes on. And as a councillor, every week I have examples of things where things would work better if we were restructured. However, there are things that we must not lose. I always talk about our council housing in the Newton and Bedworth, which is absolutely vital, that we have council housing of some kind, and it's extended and improved. And we have a massive issue with staffing. Yeah, our councils, particularly our district councils, haven't got enough staff at the moment to do stuff like the air quality work, like a lot of biodiversity, climate change. Yeah, we have already a problem. And actually, doing a reorganisation that cuts the number of people working in the Newton and Bedworth on these issues wouldn't be the right thing to do. So it is not about reducing the workforce. You talked about people losing their jobs in the wider community. We have people working really hard in our local councils that we mustn't lose. What we must do is actually reorganise them so they work more effectively. We must not lose stuff from Newton to Warwick. So in the reorganisation, it must be a reorganisation, not a move to Warwick. And that is why a lot of the stuff about the double devolution and the new structures are really, really important, and which is why the work of Price Cooper's is really very shallow. Yeah, it is a first cut of the top level that doesn't see all the detail about what goes on in districts. And I'm passionate about sorting out the climate change problems, and clearly our new structures must work with that. And that then impinges on getting the democracy right of this new structure. We can't have a massively powerful council with very few councillors. That is unaccountable, which is why I want to look at the additional members-type systems.
Keith, can I ask you to stick to this particular? All of this is very relevant. It is relevant, but it's not today's decision.
Well, Chair, I want to make sure that in this talk to the ministers, we actually say there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we actually install the place for those checks and breaks and balances, because it's really important. They aren't in the paperwork going to government at the moment, particularly housing and how democracy works. Thank you.
And you're absolutely right, that they are critically important. And the locality stuff, I believe you know, is very important to me, that we make sure that we still deliver all the very best, but we look at how we make those efficiencies. And I think your point, that people in the right jobs doing the right things, is rather important. So we get the most productive use for things like climate change and housing are absolutely right. So all of those need to be what comes out of the next phase, not necessarily this. This is the start of the conversation. I'm moving now to Geoff Morgan. Then I've got Gerry Ruudhaus, Dave Parsons and Heather Timms. Geoff Morgan, please.
Thank you very much, Izzy. I'm in favour of this for a number of reasons. In the Conservative Manifesto 2019, there was a clear statement proposing greater devolution to local areas and communities in England. This forthcoming White Paper is expected to flesh this pledge out and indicate how devolution and local government reform can aid the national recovery post-Covid. Two days ago, I saw a reference to an LGA IFS report warning that nationally, local government faces a 3.2 billion shortfall, even if council tax rates are levied at 2% the maximum possible. Here in Warwickshire, my own portfolio Children's Services is looking at a possible 3.6 million overspend, 2.8 million of which is due to Covid. It's quite clear the local government nationally must reform. Many smaller authorities and some larger ones too are facing serious financial problems, and we here in Warwickshire will still have to make further savings. The opportunities that unitary government can bring for our residents in terms of economies of scale and local empowerment cannot be ignored. Warwickshire wants to lead in this area, and we still believe that our submission will receive serious consideration from MHCLG, which is why I strongly support sending this paper to local government as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Geoff. And Gerry Ruudhaus next.
Thank you. Yeah, the decision was made at full council, and I fully understand why we're here today with the recommendation that is here. Just a couple of questions to that. Does the recommendation from council go with the papers? Because the principles which under sit the recommendation that was made at council about climate change, double devolution, I think are extremely important, and they should be up there to show the process. And the second one is that I noticed that an invite went out to districts and boroughs to jointly put something in today or the end of the month. Have we had any news or any telegrams or anything at all, emails that come flying into Shire Hall about, yes, we'd like to do that? Because I do agree, whatever happens at some stage, people are going to have to get around the table or into rooms or somewhere and to actually start some discussions about the future of local government in Warwickshire. Regardless of whether that's unitary, two, one, six, or whatever, I don't really, you know, it's gone beyond that, because people are now saying that change is needed, and if change is needed, therefore, the only way we can get through that is actually start talking to each other in a grown-up manner about the future of services. You know, I'm passionate about adult and health and children's services and child poverty. You know, if we're to really tackle those, we do need to get around the table and see how we can best provide that in the future. But I think it's important that the principles that were aligned at full council should be there with the Secretary of State. And I'd be interested to know whether actually any district or borough has been in touch. And to Keith's point about, you know, it all going to Warwick, I pray that's not the case, Keith. That's totally wrong. You know, the new HQ, whatever it will be, will be in rugby, of course, because rugby is the centre of, you know, the county, it is there, you know, because we have this north-south divide. So it's the east rugby that will hold the refereeing match between everybody fighting away. So that's the future.
There you are. You heard it here first. The answer is every area needs to have its representation, as they do now. Every area must have its council so that people can walk in and they can do business with their council. Not everyone picks up the phone or gets in touch online, and we need to ensure that there is still space for everybody to see their local council, whatever their local council ends up being, two or one, but they will still be in touch with their local council, their local councillor, who will do everything and who will be able to respond to all their needs. So the next one is Dave Parsons. Oh, sorry. Before I go to you, Dave, I just want to respond to Gerry on that. The resolution of the council is something we all agreed. Absolutely, yes, it does need to go in. And I fundamentally, 100%, agree with all those intents that were put down. As regards the district councils, I have had one reply, and that is from Warwick District Council Leader, who has implied that they are not yet ready to engage in that discussion as they have not come together to talk about it. So I hope that that helps. Dave Parsons next, then Heather Timms, Geoff Clark and Claire Goldby.
Thank you, Izzy. Thank you. Yeah, a couple of points of clarification really and a few concerns. One peculiarity, Matt Weston got in touch with Robert Jenrick's office, I think yesterday, and was told that they weren't aware of the conversation that was there, which is peculiar. And I mean, I'm not suggesting that that's your fault. I'm just suggesting that they need to get their act together, because it's not helpful if that's what's being said. This isn't the time for detail, and I don't want to get into detail. But your last point raised an important point, that, you know, Warwick District Council, yes, have responded and are ready to go ahead. That may be put right very quickly. But I think one of the big concerns of the districts is the consultation, and that is, you know, a real concern for them. And this timetable appears to be pretty tight. I'm wondering what contact is going to be made with the districts in order to try and sort out an effective and realistic timeline for this? Because, you know, it's not good enough if the districts are simply to be bumped into this, and that is something that we need to guard against. I very much endorse what Keith has said. I think he spoke very well on this issue and actually, you know, has the sense of it in my view. I appreciate that we're joking about where the centre of power will be, and obviously I'm absolutely convinced it should be Polesworth. But the problem is that actually, people are very worried about power simply disappearing to Warwick. And double devolution sounds good, but we are going to need to know some real hard facts on that. You know, if you look at parish councils and town councils, often their elections are very irregular, and there may be more relevance is going to be given to those councils, and people will be contesting those seats. But if we look at the position as it is at the moment, I would not have a great deal of faith in it, and that's something that we've got to look at, definitely. Last point is, and I'll take Geoff's point about the financial problems that are there. But we have to remember that the financial problems of local government, we can certainly argue about when they began, but they've been going on for 10 years, and we've seen more and more cuts. Yes, Covid has exacerbated this position, but actually, the financial position is not simply down to Covid. It's down to the failure of government, essentially, to provide a reasonable, well, a reasonable basis.
Dave, if we can stick to this paper.
Yes, I take it.
I absolutely understand you're making your political point.
I am.
And I admire your ability to do that. So well done in doing that. But you did hear the level of Covid impact and how significant that is. And I think it is irresponsible of any councillor not to try to address a future that will help our residents rather than hinder it.
Yes, I absolutely agree with that.
And on the consultation point, again, I will just say, the consultation process has to start after the issue of an invitation from the Secretary of State. That is how it has to start. We have, all of us, all districts and all county chief execs have been told that. The district councils have currently gone out to consultation in advance of taking it through their council and in advance of taking it to the Secretary of State. So I am really not sure how that works, because it is not this laid-down process. So we will be going through the process that we have had clearly explained to us, that we submit to the Secretary of State, we ask about an issue of an invitation. At that point, we then go out. Now, we've invited the districts to engage with that as well, and on that point, we have not yet heard back. So the next one is Heather, then Geoff Clark, Claire Goldby, Colin Hayfield. Heather.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I was just going to confirm the process around this, and the process is going to take some time and some years to complete. What we're doing today is starting that journey and showing the leadership towards a new model of local government in Warwickshire, and that includes the county council. The county council will not exist. A unitary council or two unitary councils or whatever the shape is that we all decide on together will be the outcome of this as we go forward. Consultation is key. I totally agree. And we need to have informed local debates with residents so they understand that they can shape what double devolution in Warwickshire will really look like and have a final say in the outcome, whether that's parish and town councils, local boards for larger towns, but councils that have a real influence wherever people live. We've got an opportunity here to involve the whole county in the final outcome. I do believe we need to get this decision made, because the residents should be at the forefront of everything we do. So we get this decision made, we ask for an invitation from the government, and we keep having those conversations with our residents, not just continuing talking amongst ourselves. Let's just get on and do it. It's time. We don't want to be in the position where we're having to go because we're so short of money, that we need, you know, we need to be able to plan this properly and fairly. And also, as the climate change champion, I would say, I know we've lots to tackle across the county, and to do that, we will need money. Simply, we've got to change the model of local government in order to save that money and be able to spend it where our residents want us to. Thank you. I'll be supporting the decision.
Thank you, Heather. Geoff Clark, then Claire Goldby, then Colin Hayfield, and I've got more after that, but I'll just give you advice. Geoff Clark first.
Thank you, Chair. A fair bit of what I was going to say has been said by yourself and Heather and other members. There are tough decisions to be made. That's why we are councillors. At the end of the day, you know, we have to show some leadership and direction to ensure that whatever services that we provide are provided or continue to be provided as a best possible way that we can for the residents of Warwickshire. So these tough decisions, you know, have to be taken. And, you know, I'm happy to be able to say that I'm, you know, ready to consider these options. In relation to the assertion that it's a power grab, I agree with you, Izzy. You know, all councils would cease, both the upper and the lower tier. You know, all councils would cease, both the upper and the lower tier. You know, we would create a new council for Warwickshire or two new councils if that's what the, the requirement is. We have to be ready to make those tough decisions and make the right moves to make sure that we deliver the services again. Keith, some level of speed. Yeah, there is, and there's necessity for some level of speed, you're right. But we need to be in the driving seat for this. We need to be able to try and help deliver the services that we quite adequate, well, deliver for the, for the residents at the moment. We need to be able to continue those services, whether it's, you know, whatever council that becomes or what councils that becomes. Those services need to be delivered and we need to make sure that we're in a position to be able to do that. The other thing that's mentioned and was mentioned at full council last week, most members of the districts, boroughs and the county council have identified that there's a need for change. They've recognised that we're having to do something and this is, you know, it's not what we would be looking to do if we had the options, but it's something we're having to do to ensure that those services continue. In relation to the climate change Keith, again going back to one of your comments. In the paper, it says in 1.222 that climate change adoptions would be built into any new model of local government. Yes, the, these, these comments have got to be considered, but they're considered at the right time. At this point, we're just looking to make the decision and put the opportunity to government to give us the opportunity to be able to change Warwickshire in order to deliver for the residents going forward. I'm not going to say anymore Chair, a lot of it's been rehearsed. There'll be a lot more discussions in relation to this, I'm sure, going on between the districts and boroughs and the public. Because they, at the end of the day, they are the ones that matter and they are the ones that we need to ensure are looked after and services delivered to. So at this point Chair, I'm considering supporting this motion and we'll wait to hear the rest of the debate. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Geoff. Claire Goldby is next. Claire.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, so again, some of the things that I was going to raise have already been raised for, what are the responses from the districts and boroughs? And I'm glad that yet again, the process has been cleared. We can't start the conversations until we've received the okay from government to start the conversations. It seems that this is just not being understood by some people or they are willingly misrepresenting it. I'm erring on the latter now with, with the amount of stuff I've seen floating around. It's starting to get tedious. You know, and again, the, the locations of, of bums on seats, doesn't matter. This whole, this whole incident in front of us now, where are we all sat? We're all having a discussion, but where are we all sat? I'm sat in my kitchen, but I'm still engaging on a cabinet meeting. So my bum is on my seat in my kitchen. Stop, stop with this narrative about everything's going to go down to Warwick. We don't know because that discussion hasn't been had. And to, to keep portraying this to our residents in that manner is, is just disingenuous. There's a lot of stuff going on at the moment that is disingenuous and quite honestly, I, I support this going forward today and I, I'm getting a bit fed up of people who have ulterior motives, sending me emails telling me what I should and shouldn't do when they can't even be bothered to pick up the phone and speak to me or sit face to face with me. So if you want to ask me to do something, please address me personally, not in round robbing emails. And also painting this as a power grab, again, speaking to those people who are doing the round robbing emails and such like. If it was you on the front foot, it wouldn't be a power grab. You'd be calling it progress. So can we stop messing about like this? Because again, it's getting tedious. The residents that I speak to are getting really fed up with this and they can see right through the politicking of the situation. I'm one of the people who has lost their jobs. I recently lost my job. I am walking in those shoes right now. So anything that can be done to make this a better environment for people like me who have lost their jobs, who potentially could lose their homes in this situation that we find ourselves in, that is beyond our control, quite frankly. We have to make the best of a bad job. It's incumbent on us to do that. And I want to be part of that conversation. I want to be involved in this because I want to be able to represent my residents and people like me. You can all represent your residents in any way you see fit and I will take direction from the people who elected me. So, thank you very much Chair.
Thank you Claire, very much. I just want to address the point of timing because it has come up by one or two people. And, you know, there is this perception that there's speed and haste. And I need to just dispel one or two points about this and make some points as well. This started back in June, so we've had three months, oh, two months progress on this, three months progress on this. And we had, we could be talking about it for months if on the basis, months and even years if on the basis that many people say, why the haste, why the haste? If we do not submit, we will not be able to address the financial concerns of this council. None of this happens quickly. We are definitely talking about at least two years, more likely three years. Every delay that we have in getting on with the conversations means that we cannot address the financial challenges that we face. Nor too can those, those districts either. If we start the conversation, we are in for a long process even then, but it is a process that starts to take responsibility for the financial challenges ahead. So Colin, I'm going to you next, then Peter, then Les Cable and then Cam Cork.
Yes, thank you Leader. I, I, I think we're in, in danger of, of repeating some of the things, but the, the points are still, need to be emphasised, I think. This is, as you said and other people said, this is very much the start of a process. And there's going to be lots of further discussion and consultation to take place in order to shape this. And it is right now that we, that we put it in the hand of the Secretary of State and say, please start this formal part of this conversation with us all, please. Second point is that change is uncomfortable for many. But it's inevitable, I think, as we face, particularly financially, as we face challenging budgets year on year, wondering what we're going to cut back on this year, what we're going to have to start charging for this year in order to try and balance the budgets. And some of the districts are finding this a particularly challenging issue of financing at the moment. We ourselves, although better off than some, are still not in a particularly comfortable position in terms of the county council, in terms of what we're having to do to make budgets meet. And we know that a unitary solution of whatever sort, be it one or two or whatever, is likely to lead to substantial changes that will enable us to continue to provide quality services to our residents in the form that they expect and we hope to deliver. And the third point is that starting this process now gives us ample time to think through how a unitary might work in Warwickshire or unitaries might work in Warwickshire. Now, so as to achieve a meaningful level of localism so that communities from the north to the south feel included and involved in any new structure. So I'm happy to support this resolution today. Thank you Leader.
Thank you very much Colin. Peter Button next, then Les Cable after.
Thank you Chair. I must declare prejudicial interest, the same that Gerry Rudace has got because we both possess the feeling that rugby is the centre of the universe. So, but as rugby sits on the boundary of Leicester and Northampton, it's a strange take on what the centre of the county looks like, but all good things come from rugby. But, and I was like, I kind of claim that bias, that same bias that Gerry has got. But also Gerry was very astute and very clever recently as he kind of put a motion through to rugby where he stated that, to declare that, put in the motion the idea of starting a, creating a rugby, rugby town council. And Gerry understood the importance of localism and, and that local side of the possible unitary makeup. So for once again, we're kind of, me and Gerry seem to be kind of on the same page on various things. Recently, we had a very long debate last week, six hours of it, where we basically debated in, at length, the fact that we need to change. We discussed the, the two-tier system, declared it broke. We also kind of pointed out the duplication, the waste and the confusion created by a two-tier system, which we've been muddling along with for years. So we've agreed on all that. The question is, where do we go next? And the next stage is, once we've agreed that we need to change, we have to go to the minister and that's what this motion is about today. So it's imperative, after the six hours of debate, that we do not sit here provocating and kind of continuing to talk about how it's going to look unless we've had that ministerial nod of the head as to going forward. Once it gives that nod of the head that we can change, then there will be a two-month consultation in which we can basically look at the way in which our unitary will look, whether it be two unitaries or one unitary. But that two-month consultation will involve everybody and the way in which it's going to look. So in, in terms of kind of the financial side, I think Izzy kind of explained it really well right at the very beginning. The alternatives in terms of balancing the books into the future are, we change the way in which we deliver local services or we end up putting up council tax or diluting our services. None of those two, second two, I want to do. And the electorate would be kind of looking upon us, why are you doing this to us when you have the opportunity to change the delivery system? So on that basis alone, and especially as we're going to difficult times for the electorate and possible high unemployment, loss of jobs etcetera. We, we kind of, we've got to kind of hold ourselves together and change ourselves before we kind of load the tonne to the public. And I don't want to see council tax rises in the double figures, not since, since the last time the Labour Party was in control in county, but I don't want to see that. It's wrong. So we have to change ourselves and this is the next stage. We have to kind of send this off to the minister for him to kind of take a look at. So I'm, I'm in support of the motion on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. May I bring in Les Cable and after that I've got Cam Cork, then Andy Crump. Yes?
Thank, thank you Leader. I have now sat through at the county council, three debates. Two on unitary, which had overwhelming support and one on the integrated care system, which the similar debate for an integrated health system for Warwickshire. So it is time to stop debating. We've had three debates, all have had the same outcome. And on the health issue, we have made so much progress in partnership over the past years and particularly through Covid. Anything other than carrying that forward would be a mistake for the residents of Warwickshire which we serve and this is about the residents. And, and that is why we are here. My residents certainly have always supported unitary. They are waiting for the outcome of our debates and what it means for them. And I do have to take issue with councillor Parsons saying parish councils are irregular. Every one of mine is elected by the legal process and totally legal. And that just because they have willing volunteers to, to man them and do the best for their community, that does not make them irregular. That is what we are about, isn't it? We are talking about bottom up in this process, more power to the local people and, and that the, that is what is part of our double devolution, that is what it's about. So I'll support the motion Leader and let's move forward.
So thank you very much. I've got Cam Cork, then Andy Crump, then Sarah Bode.
Thank you Chair. I just want to begin by saying that I take offence to anybody saying that this is a power grab. We didn't start this journey and, and we're having to lead it. As many of the speakers have said already, we've had six hours of debate and we also actually had another two hours of debate in our original cabinet meeting. And here we are again, full circle. I want to pick up actually on councillor Cable's comments about collaborative working. We've had some great examples of collaborative working over the last six months with our districts and boroughs. We set up the shielding hub literally overnight and protected the very people that we are here to serve. Those who are vulnerable and those who need protecting. And I think that's a real credit to us all. I also want to pick up on the work that our public health colleagues have been doing and the CCGs across Warwickshire. And I say Warwickshire, not county council, Warwickshire. They have been working tirelessly for all of us. And, and in, by doing so, they've continued the services to provide. I also want to talk about, if I may Chair, my whole working life has been centred around customer. And it's ironic that my portfolio is customer and transformation. But it's always been putting the customer at the heart of everything we do. And that I believe is what this county council has been thriving to do and deliver, certainly since I've been a portfolio holder. So for me, I think going forward, we need to be united. We do need to start talking with our districts and boroughs about how to shape and how to look as one organisation right across Warwickshire. And this is not about us. This is not about me. It's about our residents. And I think people are forgetting that. And I will be supporting the motion today because I think we need to start getting that consultation with our, with our residents to shape the way we look going forward. And Chair, that's all I have to say so far. Thank you.
Thank you Cam. I noticed Dave Parsons has got his hands up again. I am keen, I know Dave, you've already spoken. I expect you're probably prompted by parish council discussion. So what I'm quite keen to do is, you know, allow people to speak once and have their say. So I would ask, I've put in chat, if there's anything you wanted to bring up, please tell me within chat. Andy Crump next, then Sarah Bode.
Chair, could I, could I just say, it, it's really, it's not quite a point of order, but, but Les suggested that I'd, I'd suggested that parish councils are irregular. I certainly did not.
I think he got the word wrong.
Yes, okay. That's the point.
We understand it's not, not that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I've been a parish councillor for 20 years, so I would be declaring myself irregular.
Which we're not. I will pick that point up Dave. Thank you, thank you. I thought it was probably about that. And thank you for confirming. So I'm going to bring in Andy Crump, next then Sarah Bode.
Okay, thank you Leader. Hopefully what I say won't be irregular and I think they will be coming in. Yeah, basically I'll become a councillor to help people less fortunate themselves and to speak up for those who, who don't have a voice in all parts of the county, not just in my local area. And I think this is why unitary council, one Warwickshire is my preferred option. And we all know that we're in challenging times, unprecedented. And it's the biggest crisis this country is facing since World War II. It's far worse than the banking crisis that PM Brown had to contend with in, in 2008/09 and we, we all know how long that, the effect of that lasted. Again, money will be tied unless things change and things are done differently. Warwickshire residents face the harsh truth of reduced services and a significant increase in their council tax at a time when many of those, as Claire mentioned, are facing unemployment. And one Warwickshire is a way of making significant savings, again to safeguard our services and to invest in new ways of working as well, is investing in localism, which is important to me. Obviously under Group 2020, Warwickshire had a great record in achieving these savings and these savings have helped my area in foreign rescue. And this has been really important during, during Covid as, as foreign rescues responded magnificently and was a credit to the whole of Warwickshire, aiding all communities and again, in particular the vulnerable and the shielding. And I'm, I am concerned how potentially two unitaries would affect Warwickshire foreign rescue and its ability to respond to affected living in all parts of Warwickshire. Again, I'm sure Peter's touched on it better than I have on economies of scale. But with, with my residents, they just see one council, the council, and get frustrated when one, one public body tries to pass the buck to another and denies ownership and responsibility. And I think it is a time to move on. You know, grass cutting is, is a particularly pertinent point. For Keith, it is a green issue, not because of the colour of the grass, especially with the summer we've had, some of the grass around is brown. especially with the summer we've had, some of the grass around here is brown. But there's lots of savings that can be made. We can have consistency from a point of view that one contractor could come out, rather than half a dozen contractors who come out to save them, which again could be the HQ for the new organisation. And we have got HST coming by. You can't get on it, but we have got high-speed line coming by us. So we might have to get a stop if we've become the centre of Warwickshire. But again, it's an opportunity to reduce our carbon footprint and perhaps get a local contractor in to do things. And at the same time, boost the local economy. Yeah, I think this is an opportunity for us to improve localism with double devolution. And again, there will be many opportunities to consult with all parties, stakeholders, and above all, residents. And that's who I'm here to represent. Where I'm, in part of my district, part of the county, we border Northamptonshire. And we're all aware of the immense upheaval that's gone through over the past few years, again, mainly caused by financial troubles. And we are, again, aware that many districts and boroughs nationally are facing substantial income shortfalls, especially those with tourism-based economy that's been brought about by Covid, not just austerity. And I don't want this to happen to Warwickshire. I would not wish to see a decision imposed on Warwickshire. And again, people saying is, we are premature, but this is our opportunity to shape Warwickshire's future. And to do this, we have to be at the front of the queue. I strongly support the recommendations.
Thank you very much, Andy. Sarah Bode, to you.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak. Last week, this time last week, we were at Shire Hall debating the motion, which I have in front of me. And I very much welcomed last week the addition, which I think was something that the Conservative group put in, inviting Warwickshire District Borough Councils to make their submission to MHCLG alongside at the same time as any submission made by the county council. And I thought that was a really, really positive addition. I think all the principal councils in the county are all working towards the same aim. They may not all agree on the same makeup of any unitary, but I think all the councils are working towards the same aim. And I thought this was a really, really positive thing to do. And I had hoped that that would mean that the two reports would go in together and that all the, all councils will be working as one. So I'm disappointed and I think it's a shame that in fact that is not happening. I know that Izzy has written to the district and borough leaders or perhaps they expected to have a little bit more than a few days to respond to that. So I do hope that unity can break out. I'm sure many of us would love to be a fly on the wall at one of the Conservative group leaders in Warwickshire all get together over a friendly drink to discuss the best of the way forward. Interesting to see town and parish councils being mentioned several times today. As members may remember, like I mentioned last week, in fact, this evening, I'm chairing a meeting of town and parish councils in Warwick District to talk about unitary. And I've sent them out details of both district and county progress on this matter so that they are fully formed. And we've got a strong attendance this evening to talk about the ways that town and parish can be more involved, double devolution, if you like, you know, working together to perhaps deliver services. And I shall be updating them, of course, on the outcome of this evening. But, you know, there's lots going on. There's consultation going on with WOLK from various parties and stuff like that. So I do hope that that's allowed to continue and that the views of all parties are actually able to be considered. Just a final point. Can I just ask, did anybody ask, any other members of the public, other councillors, from other authorities asked to speak at this meeting this morning? And if so, if they asked, that permission was denied? Can I have clarification on that? I think we've all received an email, District Council. I think it would be very helpful to have an answer to that question. Clearly, somebody was denied the possibility of speaking this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Right, I have no more speakers, so I'll go to the final summing up of this. And in answer to Sarah's question, I did have a request, not directly from the leader of Warwick District Council. It came via the chief exec of Warwick District Council to our chief exec. And I heard about it at about nine o'clock last night, eight thirty, that sort of time. And you will recall that I allowed the leader of Warwick District Council, the leader of Nun Eaton and the opposition leader of North Warwickshire to speak at the last debate, which was held on the 27th, almost a month ago now, of Cabinet. And it was a repeat of the meeting that we're having now. I chose not to allow it because this time, the, I think, just to be clear, there is no requirement for the leader of a council or for people from a council to be treated in the same way as public speakers because they have their own form of a platform in which to speak. Last time, I chose to allow that. I think that we need to accept that this has been a very painful process for very many people and it will continue to be so. We all know where the position of the district councils are. They have chosen to go to consultation in advance of taking it to their councils so that this has now started the process. I am disappointed that we were not invited to be part of their consultation process. That would, to me, seem to have been in the spirit of engagement with our residents that I would, I've chosen to put forward in our council meeting last week. However, that, we are where we are. I still believe, all of the years and months ahead of us, we need to be engaged together because we are all elected by the same residents that we serve. All 245 councillors or council positions within Warwickshire are elected by their residents. And to respect those residents, I think the due diligence should be to put forward our case equally to the district case. At this point in time, we cannot do that until we engage with MHCLG and invite and are invited to add to the process and to then go out to our residents. We had last week a motion that was added by the Liberal Democrat Group, which I think we all supported fully. We have also got a number of conditions upon which any discussions on unitary should be put forward. And I fully support those proposals. And I'm asking that within the debate today, we endorse those additional reports that were given last, additional recommendations that were given last week. And when we move forward in consultation, if we are issued with an invitation by MHCLG, when we move forward, I believe that we should be considerate of either one or two options for devolution, options for reorganisation. And whatever the outcome, what we need to do is engage on that discussion with residents. We had last week councillors who said their residents are absolutely against this single county that they say. I would ask that they equally put the case for change as they do the district's case. Anyone can make a debate one way. If you don't open all options on that debate, I believe that now is the time to allow our residents a grown-up discussion about what options are important to them, whether they think it is going to be of value to them that the children's services should be moved into a trust because it will not be allowed to be split. This is something districts do not deal with and have not had some of the challenges that we've faced. In our view, that is a really important service. And the rights of children to have the best life that they possibly can is important to me, as I know it is important to all of our councillors in the county council. But we need to open that debate. I can't say that my parishes absolutely only want one council because they have not been exposed to a wider debate. And that surely is what we all do as adults. We debate things, we come to conclusions. We do not restrict those debates. We do not restrict that intention. And at this point in time, I believe that is exactly what has been going on. There has been a real drive to restrict the county's case for change. Now is the time to open it up and to allow it to be exposed and to allow our residents the chance to make a grown-up decision of their own. So I move that we move the case for change and submit it to MHCLG, fully intending that the council resolution that was printed last week be submitted as well and that we engage in the future once we have been issued with an invitation with our residents. I move that motion and ask Cabinet now to vote on the resolution. May we please raise our hands if you approve the resolution? I have nine hands up and that is unanimous. I thank you for the debate and I thank all speakers for their presentations today. We are not quite finished, so there is a little bit more business to be done. And that is, we move the exclusion of the members of the public. I'm trying to move my, this is to move the minutes. So I would like to move that the members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. May we all agree those? This is just in order to move the minutes, the exempt minutes. So can we vote now to exclude? Thank you, the two is unanimous.